Whole house, so welcome everyone. And I'd just like to acknowledge that we are within the Gwich'wac settlement area and home. The Gwich'wac and the Inuit and people from many, many different places and it makes a great communities. And so item number two, the adoption of the agenda, which we will do on today. Interest with any peculory items. Or beginning, any interest or peculory interest. None declared delegations, presentations and petitions. Are, we have three presentations this evening and the first one is from the operation. Nunavut. All right. Close enough. And we've got Task Force Commander Turner is here and with him is it? Purple Curry, Purple John Curry?
Lieutenant Colonel.
Lieutenant Colonel. Pedaling there.
That's a big demotion there.
Yeah, sorry, sorry, sorry. Yeah. Anyway, if you want to come up and then when you speak, just press the button and I think everyone got one of their handouts. If you didn't, there's more sitting down at the table if you want to grab one that it'll tell you the areas they're talking about.
That's it. All right, your worship counselors, our guests, thank you so much for having us here tonight. Yes, I'm the Task Force Commander for Op Nanook. Twenty twenty five and my name is Aaron Turner. And I'd like to introduce the Chief of Staff, Don Curry. For you tonight, we have a placemat that describes the W five of Op Nanook. Op Nanook, as you can see at the bottom, is going to be a demonstration of the Canadian Armed Forces capability to project. And sustain forces in the Arctic under the harshest conditions while testing new capabilities. And interoperability with our US international allies. It's going to be the largest op Nanook to date in Canadian Forces history, so. Pretty excited about that, the pressure's on. To form and that's what we do best, accept the pressure and to get on with business. The exercise or operation started off many, many months ago, however, the whole components started on the fourth of February. With the arrival of the sort of cash parties, myself and the Chief of Staff included. And we're in what's known as a build phase, we're building capability and capacity. We're expanding and we are contracting local support as I'm going through that. For example, tomorrow we will have a very large C seventeen Galaxy aircraft land. And there'll be large Shunut helicopters coming in over the next forty eight hours. And there will be land and air assets coming in for the days or the weeks after that. All of the assets and capabilities will culminate around the twenty eighth of February. We will have the full contingent between six fifty and seven hundred and fifty. Soldiers, air personnel from the US. Belgium, a bunch of nations that will be here. And we will then kick off with the main components of the operation from about the third of March culminating on sort of the ninth. What you will see is a lot of air maneuver, you will see a lot of ground maneuver out towards the Beaufort. And most will be outside of the town, however, there will be, of course, some residual. With the helicopters and of course traffic as we have seven camp locations between sort of the airport. And what we're calling Camp Nanook, which is where we're staying, I think that's the furthest spot. Out of town, so we have seven spots where people are staying. And we'll be sort of driving through the city for certain periods and then of course we will be out. In the field, so to speak, exercising those capabilities for the majority of the time we're here. In terms of our procedures. There's no alcohol, we're on an operation, so there's no drinking allowed. There's no cannabis allowed. And that's both our national forces and our international allies, so they all fall under our rules. While they're here, so my message is that we will absolutely be on our best behavior. And if there are any incidents, please come to me or Don direct and we will certainly do what is necessary. I want to end on that note, I want to sort of end on a note that this is going to be an outstanding experience for a lot. Of young soldiers and air personnel from all over the world, this is going to be an exciting time, it's my first time here. And so far, you've got a beautiful area, it's like absolutely jealous, beautiful. And so friendly, so I'll open it up for any questions or Don, do you have any comments?
Just that the mixture of soldiers, sailors and airmen that'll be here, so we're going to have a lot of experience in the north and have operated here in the past. But a lot of big contingent is going to come from down south, the USA. And they're not going to have a lot of experience in the north, they're really looking forward to that a lot, very excited, they've done a lot of training. And they want to try out that training, they want to see that they can succeed at doing this, they really do feel a challenge, but they've been exercised in Labrador. So they're really looking forward to. And some of the stuff that's happening besides that is sort of testing a lot of new equipment that's specifically designed to operate north. It's going to be some Hercules airplanes landed on the ice and that's what I think, so it's going to be quite, quite a show, I think.
Your worship, any questions?
Yeah, we'll open up to, I've got some questions, we'll open it up to council. Council, any questions on the operation?
No, sounds exciting.
Councilman.
Are you videoing anything? Do we see videos of her landing?
So yes, we do have a public affairs team, they're just not here yet, they didn't come with the, with, we're talking about this today. Because we're actually missing some great opportunities to get some, some pictures today, but yes, there'd be videos, there's actually going to be some event journalists. That are coming from some major networks and they'll be here a little later, I think they'll start coming in this week.
Because you document everything and all your exercise.
Yeah.
Because obviously some places we can't, we're not going to be.
Right, right.
Kind of neat if you could show us.
Absolutely. Talk about that day until the public affairs officer gets here, we're gonna.
We're gonna have the public affairs officer do a presentation, follow up presentation with some video on.
Absolutely. End of the exercise presentation, it'd be really cool to see everything you do up here.
That's a great idea.
And the whole community and everyone could see which all the new toys you're playing with and showing off to them, we'd like to see how they work, right?
Absolutely.
See, thank you.
Any further questions? Councilor Gillis.
I just thought I'd ask, in previous years, I guess it wasn't such a big operation, I would be here. But sometimes they do community outreach and help with like projects in the communities, is there any, well, you know, you're going to be busy, but is there any plan for that?
Yes, so we have one outreach scheduled. Where we have a fair game where there will be an exchange. And I can't remember the date off the top of my head, but I will get back to you on that and sort of scheme of maneuver that we have that day. I think there are local artists and manufacturers around and the contingent will basically be there for that exchange.
Cool.
And that being said, I'm just, if, if there are things in the community that like the little product you talked about. There's no reason why people bring them to me.
Okay, good to know.
Not that we can do it for sure, but we're going to be very busy.
Something though, like. Because I think five years ago, you guys built us a gazebo.
Yeah.
We won't talk. But you did, they came and they built us a gazebo, it was really beautiful and it was a community. And then another, in a note, they helped with the greenhouse to put all the glass on the top roof, so. When you have like a group of two hundred men show up to do a job, that would take our community like a week and they did it in an afternoon, that's impressive.
Yeah.
So that's kind of what I was just. Not that I have a few, but I might.
Councilor Merrill.
Okay, you're one, you're letting Peter work, so be very careful. Just give you heads up, they say bull for it up, you're not bull for it.
Yeah, okay.
So when you're on the media, we want you to be cool. Do you know the Inuit would have a communications group here that does fantastic work? A lot of film work, you might want to touch on that, you don't know? Yeah, the Inuit Communications Society, I don't look to Gwich'wac do or not. But the Inuit do. And then there's also the Aboriginal People's Television Network, ABTN.
So they do have, they have representative that's going to be invented with us.
Oh, that's actually fantastic.
Again, it's definitely coming here, as is NBC and W five and Smothers are going to be.
That's wonderful. And my last question is, are you really going to make people dive under the ice?
Yeah.
Yes.
We'll be waiting for them to like it.
Yeah. They're asleep and dancing, they finish their dive.
Imagine how cool it'll be, but good to have you here.
Good to be here, thanks.
Questions from council? Yeah, so what's the community engagement plan, I think you're going to the school and then the Arctic market.
Yes.
And any, anything else that was? Plan that you know of?
At the top, I'm not sure, our, we have a team that does that, that organizes that, so and you probably met, you probably very similar names, so. They have a public affairs officer who will be on site and we have a civil affairs officer who is also be coordinating, I'm sure you'll hear him as well. And that the school thing I know is happening and the marketplace.
And for sure, yeah, there's one other, it's going to be the pub drop or the hockey.
All right.
Yeah. So those are the three that are actually on.
Delta time, that we somewhere between three and five. And when the flights get in and all of that stuff. Yeah, a great tournament, so yeah, true. You guys have an opportunity to watch some of it, I'm sure, it will go on all weekend, the place will be full. Great, any further questions, comments from council? Well, thanks again and welcome to all of you that are coming in, all six hundred and fifty to seven fifty of you and I know it will certainly have. Economic boost to the community and, and to some of the other communities and I think it's good timing to do such an exercise, so. Thank you very much.
Thank you. A pleasure to be here.
We have the RCMP report, Jesse, if you want to come on up. I see your mic's already on, so you're good to go.
Thank you, thank you, everyone. My, my presentation will be exciting. You're used to hearing me drone on for the last couple of years, but really, really awesome to see that. Being our forces in town and such a big contingent. As part of my series trying to introduce new members, when it's sort of works with the schedule and when they're available. I'll see, I'll call Aaron Mills, just joined us last November, ready to train. It's already really fitting him very well with the detachment and community and we tried some roadside tanning. Last week with the great folks at the Inuit Band Office, so I knew the band story, so welcome Aaron to the Inuit team. The other thing, I'll briefly mention here too, is Mayor's reports. Sort of layout changed a little bit, that was through a team with the governing Northwest Territories. And our RCMP headquarters, just a few minor changes, shouldn't really affect much of what I already report on. The other thing obviously would be, you know, sadly, another, another drug bust back in January. And I think the thing concerning to us as always is one of the individuals arrested. And already been arrested and charged here for the same thing. Was released on conditions not to come back to the Northwest Territories and did anyway, so. I'm really hoping we, we don't see that individual in the community ever again, you know, that's my, that's my hope with that. And this is maybe not as exciting as the military, but the Inuit Detachment members. In the next few months will start getting body worn cameras. I'm sure people have sort of seen that on the news or know a little bit about body worn cameras from watching especially American television. I think our first start roll in March kind of be a phased in thing, we're all going to get them, they're just little. Little things that are going to stick right out of that. And there'll be a red light on it, it's recording and a green light on when it's not. A little bit more to come, but generally speaking, we're hoping it really contributes to accountability and trust in the police. So, you know, if, if people feel, you know, they had a negative interaction, they can actually come talk to me. And we can watch the video together and sort of determine, determine what happened, so. I think it's going to be a great tool, it, you know, like with anything new, certain individuals might be like, hey, is that thing recording? And like, you know, but the officers are always going to say, you know, you're being recorded. It's only recorded on active calls for service, like we wouldn't record this, we're not going to record going to the school if we're doing a presentation or. To hide tanning and those types of things, just when we're on active calls. Where there's, you know, maybe a risk that we have to use force or something like that, so. Yeah, you can hit them, there's all sorts of information on the RCMP public webpage. It's the first time in our, I think our history that we actually publish. Our policy online, so anybody can, can look at it. So hopefully that kind of rolls out and, and the community gets used to it and, you know, helps, helps with prosecutions too, right? When we start to, it'll capture some of the things that we see on a day to day basis, so. Yeah, that, that, that's it for me, obviously, open to questions, comments, concerns. Mayor, councilman.
Also, questions, comments on the report? Councilman.
I like hearing you guys still be very, very proactive, perhaps under the road checks. So helping our video a lot. Keep up the good work, thank you.
Thank you, sir. I should mention too, the Northwest Territories, RCMP has just implemented. It's called Crime Reduction Unit, so it's going to be a unit of members out of the element, but that are going to support Inuvic. And one of the primary mandates will be combating the OSAS drugs. So they, I've already had lots of conversations with the new sergeant and he's helped us out a little bit with this one. So hopefully, hopefully get them up here, I think we're going to be great partners with them, they're going to assist the detachment here locally.
Any other questions, comments? Just a question on the arrests that were made, is there any link? Between the people that were arrested and some of the fires that we've seen, I guess at least four or five different locations?
We, we have no evidence to suggest that they were directly involved, but I will, will say that those arsonists are still under investigation. And we're still actively pursuing any and all these on those.
Councilman McDonald.
Yes, a question on the repeat offenders or any offender that you see aren't allowing the territory. So if they're arrested here, they get prosecuted here, obviously, but you there just was come back and go to the court, are they coordinated with us?
Yeah, so, so often these individuals will hold them here until they have a due before justice of the peace. Part of their deal that they can get released is that they have to book their own ticket. And never come back to the territory unless for court purposes, so they have to check in with us. And say a day or two prior to court saying, I'm back, just here for court, this is where I'll be staying. However, as we've seen with, with this individual, especially that that didn't stop them coming back.
And then on a repeat, on a fast like that, is there a way to, to hold them, like is there a repercussion more or do they just get sent back again?
So we're, we're definitely opposed to these individuals being released at all.
Yeah.
And in this particular case, that individual is still in custody.
Okay.
That's it.
Any further questions, comments from council? All right, thanks, Jesse.
Thanks, everybody.
More, I truly appreciate all the work, all the members are doing and making your town a better place to live and a safer place to live, so.
Thank you very much, guys, thanks for your support.
Thank you.
Councilor Merrill.
I should have declared that conflict. Let's hope you need the G U T project.
But when we get, when we get to that item.
I thought we already been there.
What's that?
I thought we'd already been there.
Very. Sorry, which, you say?
Eight point three?
Oh, yeah, when we get there, just declare, also if you're not, let me see, well, yeah, you can declare.
I'll leave.
Yeah. All right, four point three, NWT, Environment and Climate Change Delegation, so we've got the two. And chief firefighters with us, so come on up and.
Hey, good evening and thanks for putting this on your agenda, we're just going to go over some of the past seasons there. On the fire situation. Two thousand point four wildfire season summary. We had three fires in the region. One was the Hoover Fire. Which is south of Siggetchik. It ignited again. Two thousand five four and we basically monitored that one. And called it out, we had a person caused fire. Up around Paskey Lakes. We figured that one might have been started by either a ATV mopper or a cigarette. We had one in the Lux Channel in the Delta. Two of those fires were. Actioned and called out. They're relatively small fires except for one of South of Siggetchik. Looking ahead for the two thousand twenty five season, we're getting. Community threat assessments, review the Inuvic wildfire protection plan. Worked with the Inuvic SAOs and. Inuvic Fire Department to update the interface response plans. Interagency training with the local fire department and. I believe it's going to be the S one thirty one training and the. Value protection. Stuff and.
And we'll be doing this fire burning, so we'll teach them how to use those drip torches to light up the fuels in the area. If needed.
Yeah, you can see the picture there, a junk park there where they burn the mounts and it's coming a regular thing every year, so. Quite nice to see, there's some fire smarting initiatives. Register your value at risk, basically cabins are on the landscape, if you don't know they're there. Chances are, chances are, we might not be able to make it American protected. Fire smarting is. Major concern these, this day and age. You know that cabins are ongoing. The wildfire response is a consideration when we get fire starts. You look at values at risk, land and resource management, objectives. The available resources, the equipment, people and services. The current and expected fire weather. Current and potential fire activities in the region and across the NWT. Where property, property or resources are threatened. The relative value of what's being threatened, the best available local indigenous and scientific knowledge. And top of the list is people and our crews are. One of the considerations too, for their safety as well as others. Making the decision to fight fires, if the fire is threatening people, communities or key infrastructure, it's highly likely to be actioned immediately. These decisions can change throughout a fire. Response as resource availability, fire activity. And weather changes. Decisions are never made lightly.
Yeah, so when we start these or fire starts, there's a lot of things actually go into it and we are looking at so many different things that whether the, whether coming in. The fuel, so they, we have spruce around here, it's the most volatile. Plant in the area, I mean, it's in Canada, it's what's going to go up, so we're looking at things like that, we're looking at resource availability, so maybe there's. Tree fires, tree fires that are approaching communities, we have to look at that and who we can get up and put on that fire, so we had a fire. Way up, where was it? In the middle of nowhere, honestly, and then what happened is there was a fire near Siggetchik, so all our resources had to be diverted that, so he's constantly changing. If something happens, it's, it's never just, okay, we can put this fire, there's always a lot of things that we need to take into consideration when we make these decisions. But as always, number one is safety.
So in the current resources we have in the Beaufort Delta, it's myself, the manager of forest operations there and Angel our forest officer. We have a regional fire technician. We have three wildland fire crews, one in Portmire Person, this is a five person crew. And two in Inuvic, which are four person crews. We have roughly fifteen EFFs if needed. We do EFF training, we have one hell of medium helicopter. One is. Seventy hour contract or something?
To increase that issue.
Okay, it might have increased it, but, but just good. So that's all the. Resources we have and at any given time. We may be exported to other regions. Like last year, we only had three fires, so. Most, almost everybody was exported, I was exported to. Portley Yard and. For dress. Angel was exported also.
Everywhere.
Everywhere, including Alberta. Our fire crews were exported as well. We also have two clerks and they were exported as well. Did you have any EFFs? EFFs, we had to move, so. Try to export them to whenever the heat rises and usually. They. Get sent out right away.
But we do have, we're never all gone at the same time, we'll have one duty officer, we'll have one fire crew available. And the closest community we need, probably Norman Wells, that will get them off, so we would do call for resources available. The big thing is that we have those emergency firefighters, those extra firefighters that we trained. Our training last year was pretty successful, so I think we had like twenty people, three of them we deployed to fires. Both in the territory and out. And with that, it's just a big bank of people that we can call on at a moment's notice, so the training we have to do, when there's still snow on the ground, but the town. Was really beneficial in bringing that training together, we had support for the greenhouse, the fire department, Aurora College, all to get this done and get that trained. And we're looking to do that again this year, so we want to build that bank of people that are available if it doesn't where we're exported. We have that one crew and everybody's there, ready to go.
So the role of the governments is planning, preparing and completing community protection initiatives. To be ready before the wildfire comes. Giving people and organizations the tools to take action to prepare for wildfires. As they come. So a lot of planning and preparing. Goes into this. Wildfire preparedness is everyone's responsibilities, from the homeowners, the renters, cabin owners, businesses. Fuel breaks, fuel reductions at the. Uh fuel breaks, fuel reductions at the communities, the the scale is important. But they have to solve uh wildfire threats, individuals and neighborhood level action is needed. That's where uh fire smart comes comes in. Fire Smart is your guide to reducing your wildfire threat at your home cabin or business. Based on decades of research. Proven to reduce the threat of damage to your home cabin or business from wildfire. Work can be done here on. We got uh information on fire smart stuff. Right up to the cabin um. Little further out as much as uh thirty meters away, there's different. Fuel treatment plans in there that uh really reduce your um cabin from igniting. Um. Like I said, it's up to the individual to um basically do their own cabin. There's no funds available for it if you're doing your cabin, but chances are. We're starting to look at if people are fire smarting their cabins, then we can protect it. It's an added protection, but if no work was done on fire smarting, it may be left. To uh. A fire, that's uh. We have limited equipment like uh sprinter kits, but if the fire smarting is done, it's. Lot easier to protect. I know in the past we used to have a crews go in there and start brushing over on cabins and. They use up valuable time and resources just doing that work for cabin owners from the actually should be the. Cabin owners that uh do the work. So there's a whole bunch of uh Q R codes up here, you could see um. For fire smart homeowners, it's all online stuff. Uh last minute check-ins um. Anything to do with renters, it's all right there. Um we have some limited material at Shalit too as well. People and fire, we can give that out.
Yes, we have the homeowners guide that has been in years past, we send out so when people get the burn permits from the town. They're they're issued a fire smart menu as well. Uh Deputy Hicks is, has been certified as a fire smart assessor. So if he's able to do that as well, I don't know if he's gonna train a bunch of new people. So they'll be able to give people advice on what they can do to protect their home. And even something as small as putting a tarp over something, just the energy that they expended from an ember, just trying to burn through the tarp. Is enough to put that in. So I mean, just simple things like that are good enough to, you know, just save your life.
Thanks, Ernie. Thanks, Angel. Questions from council?
Information.
Well, for me.
I'd be, I seen you're working on Chuck Park. Have you considered other parks? Like which in Park, Cary Creek?
Oh. Yeah, it's uh, we have to get approval, so we did with John and he's okay with us burning those parks, but different things around that. So we are looking at at doing and and maybe some places around the community.
I just seem so busy in the springtime and I I watched the campfire light up from grass in the spring.
It is, it's for once that, that's what we see, uh we were doing it in Hay River and I think it was Fort Smith were doing. Just lighting up that fuel right off. It's always controlled. We have people around. I love setting those fires. But it's training everybody else too. So last last couple years, we had some fire department members as well and I was believing firefighter. Elise, yeah, she was helping us out and Noel was helping us out as well. So just little things like that. Uh we have lots of places of brass, you just just take it out. Take it though those papers, I mean, it's always been, there's smoke mitigation that we always look at as well. But we're hoping to make it a cross-training opportunity, bringing the fire department in, we do things like that.
Yeah, um. We're starting to use more and more uh prescribed fires um like. We had some stuff planned for even Port MacPherson um. That Siget Chick is gonna be a big one that we're kind of um. Do some burning around there. Uh there's no fire history in that area and it's always one of our. Communities of concern and we're taking off some meetings and. Try to get their buy-in to do the prescribed burns um hopefully. Get it done before a fire reaches the community one of these days.
Chief Arm is really on board with teaching even the fire department how to use those drip torches to light up that fuel. So if it comes when we have a fire approaching the community, uh they are able to assist with not just putting out the fire. But letting of those things like around telephone poles or infrastructure that might not. Be extremely safe, they just light it up and they're good to go. So they have that nice big patch of black around it, that's not gonna burn out. So they're really on board with this.
Any other questions for Ernie or Angel? I think in our budget, we have six hundred, five hundred and fifty thousand for fire smarting this year around the community.
So that funding is part of what they were talking about our wildfire mitigation plan. Um the funds we need to spend and then we get it. It's actually uh through N W T C. And uh through the federal government that way. So it's a long-term plan. Uh that's six hundred thousand is um what was. Targeted for the town to use, but it is a long-term plan. So any of that um. Funds that are being used have to be through an approved wildfire plan, which is what E C C and the fire department has been working on. So it's a combination of everything from fire breaks to fire smarting to other resources.
Chief Arm, I have been discussing quite a few little ways to bring the community into it. Where there is planting new types of vegetation that that isn't as flammable. Or even just removing that dead down fuel that's that's already in those areas, thinning, pruning. So we've been talking about that and you know, hopefully we have a nice plan looking forward.
Yeah, certainly on the bypass road, I mean, depression's been cleared a couple times and uh with the road there, I think that's. That probably helps. And then there was some fire smarting that they've done on the. North side of town with the, when when there was that threat of the fire uh coming in from the north, that so. We've got certainly a start on it and do more as as it's identified needs to be done and. Yeah, makes good sense. Anything further from you, Ernie or Angel? No, that's that's it. All right. Well, thanks for coming out and uh thanks for giving us the report on fires and we certainly look forward to uh. Working with the both of you as we move forward into twenty twenty five.
Yes, thank you. Thank you for putting this on your agenda.
Yep.
Thank you.
Item number five, public questions period. Think their public is disappeared, so good on that one. Uh. Item number six, the adoption of the minutes since there. Anything on the minutes that we need to change? Also, Steve, if you've gotten anything, because my back is to you, just feel free to holler out if you've. Got any questions, comments, uh or anything on any of the agenda items, because uh you don't always turn around and see that you're uh. Are that good? Any changes needed on the minutes? Seeing any? Uh. Item number seven, action items list coming out of the minutes. Okay, any, anything on there that uh people need more information on? Better go through uh all of them separately or anything there that uh. We've got item number six on the list. We've got a um another agenda item on that later.
So I I guess I did have a question quickly, Peter. I see in item two with the. Power corp intervention, we provided evidence to support a rate decrease for Anubis. So are we actually seeking? To lower the rates here? I'm assuming that's based on a lot of the the solar energy that we're producing in the wind energy. So is that part of our submission, N T P T, N T P C, just not just to fight against the proposed increase, but actually proposing a decrease for the Anubis?
Right, so there's there's kind of two phases of the intervention. There's the overall territorial. Kind of pricing with the intervention and then there's a community component of that. And one of the questions we've got from from Anubis is with all of the renewable energy. That has taken place and um with the solar panel, with the wind tower and um. I mean, with those and also with the, you know, people within the community doing solar power um. So we've had a reduction overall of the demand from the power plant, but we're not seeing any savings from that. We're still lumped in with the thermal group, which includes all the coastal communities, all of the communities that aren't on the uh the hydro group. So there is something and uh Cindy was just in contact with our intervenor. Uh person and firm. I don't know if you've got anything else update?
Other than what Mayor Parkinson had said, uh basically what they've done is the consultant has uh reviewed. Their arguments for the rate increase as well as their operations. And has provided some questions as to why are you increasing it this way, particularly as Mayor said. Uh lumping us in with either the other thermal groups on top of that is. The rate increase territory wide. Part of that had to do with some of the. Funds that they had used with the Tolston Dam and the hydro communities. And uh kind of spreading that cost across the territory. So they're questioning why uh we're paying for it basically. So that has just been issued. Uh the public document. Uh is available on the website. If you want to look at what our evidence is, it's quite a a thick piece of paper. Um. But in essence, they're like, this is the reason why we think that you should be reducing, first of all, the uh. Proposed increase should be reduced based on their findings. So right now it is just going to court for consideration and um they will get back to us once they hear anything else.
Okay. Thanks, Matt. Any other questions on any of the other action items? Uh we'll see on the boat launch. The funding proposal we put in the infrastructure was turned down, but we'd plan to have uh another meeting soon. Just to look at what we can do with the money that we have and um and then we will apply infrastructure. Recommended that we apply after the first of April for the summer uh hearing or the this summer application date for summer project. So we'll also be submitting that to after the first of April. Because we definitely need to do some work on our boat launches. It's uh not safe and it's damaging boats and um. This will be a lot better um cleaned up and and made more uh efficient and effective.
And that budget item, I believe, is around a hundred thousand?
It's one hundred thousand, yeah.
Within our budgets, a hundred thousand right now. So even if we don't get the grant funding, we can determine what the priorities are based on what funds we have available.
Yeah, there may be some other funds out there too that that in the new year that we can look at also that we can see whether we can track down. Okay. New business, number eight, one. The appointment of an alternate auctioneer. That's fairly straightforward. Um. Earlier Cindy was appointed the auctioneer, but will be out of town the date of the auction. So Stephen will be the uh the new auctioneer. Okay. So that just requires um council motion and decision. A two uh. Direction to initiate block line transfers. So this is something that's probably been ongoing. I'm guessing the last at least twenty years, because uh it it was on the table. I remember when I was sitting in this. Seat back in the early two thousands and what that is and and it it. Kind of goes for a bit and then it doesn't go for a bit. Uh but now it sounds like the territorial government is more in favor of making it happen. Our M L A Rogers um had is is had or having a member statement on that, that. The uh the commissioners' lands within municipal boundaries should be turned over to the municipal governments to deal with and and not have the yellow knife. Deal with them out of yellow knife. So or not have the G N W T deal with them out of the yellow knife. So. Um this request for council decision is just basically giving Cindy permission to start pursuing that. That's all that is. Any questions on that? Comments? It'll make it a lot easier for us than to make decisions or sell property, because then you don't have to. Apply for the land and then have it surveyed and drag it on for months and months. So that's what that's fun.
Well, I think sort of Mr. Mayor, just in addition to that too, like there's a lot of. Like ditches and rights of way in the community when you actually look at the map closely. Uh along the roadways, there's a lot of that that's still commissioner's land. We don't actually own that land technically. So I think this is definitely a step in the right direction. We should. We should get all that under the auspices of the town. So you know, if anyone's interested in acquiring that land, we can actually sell it. Rather than them potentially going directly to the government and petitioning to get that transferred over to them rather than us. So I think this is definitely an important thing to do.
Yeah, no, definitely. And it it's. Shows up time and time again. Sometimes we don't even know the land isn't ours and. Been burying people out at the cemetery on commissioner's lands. We thought, oh, that must be included in the uh cemetery. It's right there, but uh anyway, we've we've made the efforts to get all of that land around the cemetery. But there's other other lands too, and and really the territorial government isn't that interested in some of these smaller parcels and things like that. So we it'll it'll make it a lot easier. All right, uh.
Sorry, Peter, just for a second.
Look also at the map there. Um.
Just looking with some clarity on it, actually, if you if anybody can, there there's two dark purples. We'll take commissioner's land. There's a lighter purple, but there's a whole pile of darker purple. That can't be public highway, so. Is anybody else, I guess, basically? Like I I can't differentiate commissioner's land from some of the other lands.
So. If the commissioner's lands, the darker purple or is it?
Let's see, out there's some lighter purples like within the town.
Yeah.
Area, I see what you mean. And then over by airport, the airport there. Anyway, this yeah.
That this might be the coloring from this map, like if you go to Atlas.
Uh huh.
This was kind of satellite view of it. Whereas if you go to Atlas and use a different view, the purples may be the same. So uh if you'd like, we can pull up.
Oh, yeah, I was just curious. I don't think it is, because I think the airport is different than some of the other lines that we look at, right? Like there there is some differentiation with. I I mean, is the color, it's usually like the color around. Shelley, for instance, what what is that?
I'll see whether for Wednesday's meeting, we get a better map that's a little.
What I'm saying is it's probably the color overlay.
Maybe.
On on the map itself, so. We can pull up.
Yeah.
If you're curious on Wednesday, we can pull up.
Yeah, no, I I've looked at the in the hell website too and it wasn't very clear. Well, it's a very similar map, I think, but. I was just trying to differentiate what was actually what around here.
Yeah, that would be definitely good to do. Okay, we'll see if we get to get some uh maps that are a little bit easier to read. Any further comments, questions on the? Uh. Direction to initiate block line transfer. Hope we lose Stephen now.
Oh, I know, I'm still here.
Okay, good. Item number eight three, conditional use permit for a group home. I imagine that's why Peter's here?
Yes.
Okay, Peter, you want to walk us through this?
Let me get a room.
Uh, is this Peter or the other Peter? Because I've heard the word Peter a lot.
So Peter Schultz, uh, just for one second before you start, this was a presentation that was already our existing counselors. Was already done um. Once back in July, I think it was the July tenth meetings uh, where they were talking about that. So this is actually the development permit. For it, but Peter can now speak to it. And we also have N D W T housing Bronwyn. She can also speak to the project. So Peter can speak of the development piece and then Bronwyn can uh, speak of the uh, the plans. Or what they're going to be doing in the in the building.
Thank you. In the zoning bylaw. Uh, there for each type of zone, there is land uses that are listed as permitted. And land uses that are listed as conditional. If the land use is listed as permitted. As the development officer, all other things considered, I can issue a development permit without coming to council. If the. If the land use is listed as conditional, it has to be issued by council. Because the land use is considered to be something that may have. Political ramifications or something where um, a deeper and a deeper knowledge of the community and the neighbors is needed. To ensure that the land use would be appropriate. The proposal that was put before me was for what was called a wellness house. Which was for transitioning persons uh, who had left the community due to difficult personal circumstances. And now they're coming back to the community of Anuvik and giving them a place to stay as they embark on a new life journey. Um, and hopefully avoid the circumstances that uh. That led to their difficulties in the first place. Um, wellness center is not listed in the zoning bylaws. I went through it and I found the term group home. I gave the definition of. The group homeland use to the proponent and I said, does what you're proposing fit this definition? And they agreed it did. Which group home in a R one light residential or uh, low density residential zone, which is what this law is. Is listed as a conditional use. Conditional uses can be approved by council by one. Simple majority vote. It is not three readings. It is one simple vote. If you vote for the conditional use, I can prepare the development permit and and work with the team to have it issued tomorrow. Uh, and if you vote it down. Uh, we would go back to the drawing board and talk with the and we would request information on councils. Determination how to move forward. I had a look at the location um, of the facility. Uh, I believe. The idea of a transition house near in the location where it is, not too far from downtown with a lot of open space around some uh, social housing around. A community center, uh, ice rink and a store admittedly, the store is closed would be appropriate. Land uses for for this. So uh, as the D O, I'm coming to you with a request for to decide whether this is. Maybe issued a conditional use permit or not. And as a planner, I'm stating that based on the information I have, I. Have no concerns about the proposal.
Your questions for counsel? I think everyone knows where this is, where you said the press road to corner store. The housing corp bought the house and now um, we're build construction as renovating it so that it can. Function as the after treatment center.
Okay, so that was one of the questions I had. G N W T is the opponent behind this home. It'll be a G N W T run facility?
Well, I'm running G N W T through the housing corp.
Yes, um, so it would be m- maintained by housing and W T um, and. Health and social services um, with I R C will be running the program. Um, but could could I just take a step back and um, just just make another side note about this um, this proposed change of use? Um, because we we understand that there's actually been a little bit of a miscommunication. I'm not sure if this is a big deal. Um, because maybe maybe you know, this just gets approved as a change of use, but. Housing and W T um, with I R C and health and so social services, when we presented this project in June. Um, we we did not pre, we are not presenting that this. This uh. This uh, tharp unit, this um, transitional housing unit needs a change of use. We um. We gave a a code definition, a zoning definition, and there there's no actual care. Taking place in this facility. There's no alcohol being administered. Um, it's healthy residents that are there. There are staff that are going to be working there from I R C. But they're just delivering programs like um, you know, life coaching and wellness. You know, general kind of programs that we did not see as fitting underneath the like care classification. Um, so and we had actually submitted a development permit. Uh, ourselves back in um. Just looking at the date here, it was August nineteenth. Um, and I'm not sure what happened to that development permit application, but. I I believe Peter, you had reached out to our contractor. Who had this conversation with you about the wellness house and that that wasn't he unfortunately, he wasn't actually aware of the program um. Itself, so he wasn't speaking accurately to it. So I'm so sorry about the miscommunication. Um, we we weren't aware that that had happened. And I'm not sure if it's a big deal. Anyway.
Uh, yeah. Uh, I've dealt with uh. Forty development permits last year, so August of last year. May as well have been ten years ago. Um. So I'm I'm not familiar with that particular development permit. Number, I don't have a record of a development permit from August that was. I'm looking through the list right now. Uh, August, we had G T C housing, a new fence, demolition, new deck and stairs, an apartment, a new office building onsite, single crew quarters. We didn't. We didn't have that in August. Um, I did not approach the, I did not approach the instructor. He approached me with the development permit and I came to him with questions.
Okay, well, I I've got a copy of the permit and yeah, apologies that there was a miscommunication. I'm not exactly sure what what happened, but. This is the the backstory from our understanding and.
Could could you tell me what the development permit number is?
Um, I've got. I don't have the the number on this file, but I've got the PDF. So I could forward it to you. My my coworker made the application, so I could forward it to you in the morning. She just sent me a copy of the PDF.
Okay, um. Was a development permit issued for the application?
No, we did not receive a development permit approval. We.
I I guess. Probably doesn't matter what was submitted in August. One, this council wasn't there. We've got the new um, request for council decision. Which a decision will make Wednesday, but it seems pretty straightforward. So I wouldn't I wouldn't worry about wasting too much time tracking. The previous submission down wherever may have went because this is what we're going to um. Review and make the decision based on anyway. And and really it's seems pretty straightforward. Any other questions from council?
If I may, I just, I'm the. The definition of group home. Um, I'd like to read it out and just uh, the Ms. Work from G N W T could clarify. Why she believes this definition is nonapplicable. It would be very helpful to me. The definition is uh, is on the second paragraph of the request for decision paper. And it says, a residential facility which provides resident care to individuals who are in need of adult supervision or assistance. And who are provided supervision and services in accordance with their individual needs may also be identified as senior citizen home or long term care home.
Yeah, um, so that's it's that term um, care. Which uh, we we didn't see it as aligning with this project because. Care kind of implies that someone is de needing or dependent upon care. And uh, the services that I R C are offering are more like programs on um. Like getting together and beating their, you know. They're they're just more supportive. They're they're not um, people in these in these residences are like completely. Able to function by themselves. So we we.
I would classify that care can come in many different forms, though. Not necessarily, you know, strictly in the medical sense where you're administering prescriptions to them and providing that kind of. You know, nursing care. Um. Emotional well being support, I would consider a form of care and that's kind of the thing that this would be doing because you have. People who are in a vulnerable state. And you have other people there who are, you know, kind of supervising the facility, maybe not the individual themselves. But they're supervising the facility at least and providing those types of supports as a type of care. Um, while they may not be doing some of the stuff that's in a traditional sense of a doctor or nurse type role. I think they definitely still have a a role of care. And supervision over the people that are staying there while they're to make sure they're not, you know. Contravening the rules of the of the facility and things like that as well and dealing with those situations as they may arise.
For sure. I hear what you're saying. Um. Like this word care is uh, you know, when it comes to the building code and I know with zoning um, this like particular uses. Is uh, very carefully. You know, looked looked at. So I I totally understand that perspective. Um, like the example that's given here is maybe identified as a senior citizen home. Or a long term care home. Um, you know, those kind of that kind of care is fairly significant, whereas. You know, this is more of like, yeah. Just emotional care or as well maintaining the property kind of looking after. So. This is how this is how we had determined the definition and what we had present prevented to council and um, what our code analysis. Um, we had like a third party code analysis take part in this because it's also very particular from the building code that we don't, you know, if it's defined as a care facility. It needs all kind of kinds of additional um, code upgrades.
Now, as I say, what when I read the definition, the word I picked up on the most was supervision. Because this is going to be a facility that's going to have certain rules for people to be in there. And you're going to have people that are supervising the facility and the residents within it. So I didn't pick up on care so much as I did the supervision aspect of it.
So it sounds like there's definitely some soft care going on there, which all fits within the conditional use. But I don't think we need to debate that any further. I think it's pretty straightforward. Unless there's any questions from council?
I just. Just I I don't, I'm not familiar with the project on and not completely relevant, but it might be relevant to. Uh, neighbors of the area, the. Transition period, how, I mean, is there an an idea of how long people will be. Staying in this in this facility and and how many people will be staying?
Uh, so there'll be five people staying there and I. So I'm a representative from health and social service, uh, sorry, from housing. We couldn't get anyone from I R C or H S S to the meeting um, on such short notice, but I believe it is six months around about. Maximum. It it could be as short as like a six week period from my recollection.
Given the rental situation in town, it could be five or six years. You can find another place because. The the idea is that they're transitioning from rough treatment someplace else. Coming into Anuvik and, you know, getting settled again and about employment and finding a place to live, but. That is not easy for anybody. So it's uh, I I think. I think the question is is still out, you know, and how how short or how long the care may take place. So I guess we'll we'll see as it rolls out. Okay, thank you, Peter. Thank you, Bronwyn. Stephen, you're good?
Thank you.
Moving on, item number eight four, appointment of the auditor for fiscal years twenty four, twenty five and twenty six. Oh, come on back, Alana.
I heard you say moving on.
Any questions? Pretty straightforward. It's incredible. The range. That you would get over one contract, I mean, almost uh. Almost three times the difference, but. Yeah. Questions, comments on that? Saying none?
Sorry, if I can just add, uh, when we are assessing the auditors, we don't just look at the dollar figure. We also consider experience in the north, uh, the types of or the the personnel that will be coming up. Um, knowledge of Northwest Territories legislation, M A C A. So it's not just the dollar figure that we are proposing. To award to E R P. It is a weighted criteria that we assessed and they still came out regardless of cost. They still came out. Um, as the one that we are going to award to.
Okay, thanks. Item nine one, uh, request for council decision interim tax filling by law. Something that's done every year to allow. Administration to collect fifty percent of the taxes. It says fifty percent of the rates charged in twenty twenty four, which. And we had no tax increase for this year. It should be the same same rates for twenty twenty five. Comments, questions? Um. That's their final reading. Item number ten, departmental reports.
That will seem.
Not not at this meeting, so we're good to go there. Information items, I think. You, we've already had the uh. The one on um. Military exercise and drone use. And then there's another information, the um. Uh, because D and D has got a number of different things that they're doing to expand the F O L site. Uh, W S P is just doing some wild studies out there. Because it's a federal project, they're going to make sure there's no endangered species, living nesting, traveling through the area. So that's pretty straightforward. And the energy champion update. We will have uh, an opportunity to discuss this more, but we included this in the package, so you can review that. And then look at some of the recommendations from the Eric Energy Alliance and then we'll um, we'll be discussing that in more detail. Eventually, what we need to do is make whatever changes we want to want to this. And identify what action items we want and then we approve that as our community energy planning probably forward. Okay? Any counselor concerns on anything? Like we're good? All right, uh. We will be going in camera, so we'll be uh, turning off the cameras or the recording. And then staff will be leaving and we'll be having, we actually got a few things to discuss and plan for you. Thanks, guys, for coming out. You're thinking we were going to be close, but I guess we still need a moment there. Move by Alana, second by. Council McDonald. All in favor?